And I'm going to ask Mr. Guest to give the indication. So if we all rise to the indication, please.
You're having a follow-up there. We thank you for this time that you've allowed us to give together to conduct this business. Lord, we just ask right now that you would help us that we would make the decisions that are best for the city and best for the citizens. Oh, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all that you do for us each and every day. For us, in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for being here at the special meeting of Hickory City Council. I'd like to lay out a few sort of ground rules, if I may. One is, this is not our regular meeting of city council, and we do not have provision for people to speak unless called upon. You will have an opportunity, everyone had an opportunity to speak last night at our regular scheduled meeting, and they'll have an opportunity at our next regular scheduled meeting, which is, we used to say in the mountains, Tuesday a week, or a week from Tuesday, I don't know, whatever. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss some issues that have been widely publicized the last few days concerning Hickory Housing Authority. We are not, there are two aspects of this issue. One is an allegation, and I want to make this very clear, allegation of perhaps criminal sexual activity. That is not a subject of anything we can deal with. That's between the alleged victim or victims, the alleged perpetrator, and the police. Doesn't involve, at this point anyway, Hickory City Council. Now, if there's something involved in that that's a violation of HUD policy or Hickory Housing Authority policy, they will have to deal with that in their way. The second aspect of this has to do with some allegations concerning expenditures that the Housing Authority Board has characterized as personnel matters. We respect that characterization. We are not going to violate that characterization by bringing those matters into public at I want to emphasize that our role in the past has been appointment of the Hickory Housing Authority Board, and I understand that by having the right to appoint, we have the right to remove members. I don't think we've ever removed a member. We have not reappointed some. But we, I'm speaking for myself here, but I think I'm speaking, I think this will be agreed upon by my fellow council members, that we feel like we have some of the leading citizens of Hickory on that Housing Authority Board, and we need to give the Housing Authority Board a lot of room to do what they're charged to do. And I will tell you that I am convinced that their interest in serving on that board is the quality of life and the improvement thereof of the neediest of the people in Hickory. About, I don't know, I lose track of time at my age, and I think probably some of you all have the same problem, I hope. But a few years ago, we became aware of two matters that were subject to review by HUD and then for which HUD took what they considered to be, I guess, remedial action. I can tell you, I think, and I know that, speaking for myself, I believe they took an inappropriate action to require that money be sent to Washington, but that's not my And again, I'm speaking personally here because I can't speak for everybody at this, everybody up here, and I think you can understand, these people are elected because they have their own opinion. So I'm speaking mainly for myself, and at any time, I encourage anybody to speak up in any way. But I am conveying, I think, the process we went through at that time. There were two elements of the investigation by HUD and the remedial action requested. There was a minor amount of payments, I understand, to the executive directors of Strange Husband for services performed for the housing authority. I don't think any of us questioned that that was an expenditure that shouldn't have been made, and my recollection is the Housing Authority Executive Director said it was a mistake. That's my understanding of that. That was a small amount. I don't remember the amount, but maybe around $5,000. Might have been, I've heard three, I've heard five, I don't, I'm not, under $10,000. The other amount was a much larger amount, 520,000 involving payments to the brother of one of the board members. Like all the other board members, that board member was an appointee either of mine, I don't know exactly how this works, but either my appointment or the appointment of this council. And we were able to determine by talking with people at the Housing Authority and with the Housing Authority's council that that arose in this way. This board member's brother was the low bidder on a contract to provide repair and capital improvement projects over a period of time for the Housing Authority. As you can imagine, there are a lot of windows to be replaced, a lot of doors to be fixed, that sort of thing. At all times, the member of the Housing Authority who had the brother doing the work recused himself from voting. And I can understand how that could be viewed as a proper remedy for the relationship. It turns out that was not a proper remedy, but I can see how it could be construed that way. And so after, speaking for myself, and every council member will have to speak for themselves if they want to add something or clarify, and I've used this old phrase from the mountains a few times. We know what happened. It was not a matter of personal gain, as best we can tell, for that board member. It wasn't a matter of personal gain for any other board member. It wasn't a matter of personal gain for the executive director, and it just did not seem that any draconian severe measures were called for, except HUD's call for sending the money back. What I mean is, they said, "You misspent it because it's a violation of policy, so you need to pay us the amount you misspent." So they paid double. I spoke with one of the other bidders, and I asked, I said, "We had that process go?" He said, "Well, you know, we've given a chance to bid, we submitted our bid, we can't understand how the bid was that low." And so what I gathered from all of that was, the Housing Authority acted in good faith granting the bid, granting the work, violation of HUD policy, but they acted in good faith. And I felt that, my personal opinion was that since, in other respects, the things seemed to be going well at the Housing Authority, that enough attention had been paid to that. And that's the answer from my standpoint on that whole issue. In the, what we're going to talk about here tonight, well, first of all, let me just admit to you how things like this happen. I got a call at a very inopportune time for me, and spent 56 minutes on the phone Friday afternoon to a reporter for the Charlotte paper about some things that I had no idea were even out there in some form, signed by a group of people who requested anonymity. Now, most of us would put stuff like that in the trash can if they request anonymity. But when you're dealing with the public interest and the public money, and I beg your pardon, the media, it's not as simple as that. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it was garbage. I'm saying, you just normally would say, "If they don't sign it, I'm not going to pay any attention to it. I got time, I don't have time to deal with it." We had, I felt that we had to deal with it. The reporter said, "What are you going to do?" I said, "We're going to have a meeting, earliest possible date, we're going to talk about this." So here we are. I want to talk about what we've done in the past and then talk about what we want to do in the future, either the same thing we've done in the past, or less than we've done in the past, or more than we've done in the past. I have no idea what direction this meeting might go in, but we want to talk about the future oversight by Hickory City Council and public housing in Hickory. We have in front of us, is this legal, a legal paper?
Yeah, well, it's something that the legal department, Ms. Doolan, I'll put together to help you all and publish welcome to look at it as well.
Do we have copies, or can we put it on, we can't put it on the board, can we?
Sure. And it just briefly details the history of the relationship between Hickory City Council and the Public Housing Authority, and what the roles are as to those two entities as set out in North Carolina General Statute 157. And I'll be glad to give you a brief overture of that if you so desire.
Okay.
I'll start with a history lesson. Back in 1966, I think 27 or so individuals petitioned the city of Hickory as is by law allowed to establish a housing authority to basically take on the task of doing what it's doing at this time. The law book at that time said not less than five or more than nine people could be appointed to that commission. City Council appointed five individuals to serve as commissioners for the Public Housing Authority in 1966. In 1984, the city council at that time extended or increased the number of commissioners from five to seven, one of which would be a tenant resident of the housing projects. The law has changed since then and says that you can have no less than five or more than 11 board members on the Hickory Housing Authority. The Public Housing Authority and Hickory City, City per se, City politic, and Hickory City Council are two total and distinct entities. The role of the city of Hickory and the role of city council as set out in North Carolina General Statute 157 is that the mayor appoints board members for the Public Housing Authority, and that's per the law. Those terms are for a period of five years, and a commissioner can be reappointed and has been reappointed in the past. No council member of this body, nor the mayor, can serve on that board. And as I said, the terms are for five-year, five-year terms. The only way that the city council has the authority to by itself remove a commissioner under the statute is for inefficiency or neglect of duty or misconduct in office, and that's after that commissioner or board member has the right to due process, has a right of notice and a hearing, and that type of thing. So where we are now is, and I want to also point out that the city of Hickory does not fund the authority. No city funds directly go to the Public Housing Authority. So where we are now is, we have, I think, seven board members. You could appoint additional board members if you so desire. That would be by resolution or ordinance at some future meeting. But again, the relationship between the entities are the council through the mayor making appointments to the board. There is statutory law that says that council has the discretion to abolish the existing public housing authority by resolution and transfer its authority and responsibilities, obligations, personnel, property, both real and personal, to the city or council could abolish the existing housing authority and concurrently designate an existing redevelopment commission to exercise the power, duties, and responsibilities of a housing authority. But as it stands now, the Housing Authority is, when I say autonomous, again, the mayor makes the appointments, and I think we've always done that like we've made any appointment. I think recommendations are made, and I can't speak for the mayor, but I think he's been pretty diligent in his, in the past in making his appointments. But that's kind of a brief overview of what your relationship is with the Housing Authority, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, at the present time, just for information, by appointment last night of Valicia Hackett as lieutenant representative, we have a full complement of board members at seven. But there is no prohibition on appointing additional board members at any time, if we see fit.
Yes, sir.
It's a matter of what seems to work well, and, you know, there has been, and this is not an attempt to respond to newspaper article, but I do want to point out something. There are very seldom, very seldom are there lots of volunteers for the board of the Public Housing Authority. I feel we are very fortunate. Well, I didn't, I said very seldom, I didn't say never. But one thing that I have always, always kept in mind is, I don't want the appearance of an agenda. We want good, just like we like good-thinking council members that'll save their mind and vote how they feel and live with the consequences. That's what we want. But we don't want people going in and saying, "I've got an agenda, and I'm either going to get my way, or I'm going to make them miserable." We can't have that. We've got to have people who say, "We are working strictly for the interests of the neediest people in Hickory," period. But we've had, we very rarely have volunteers. It's usually a recruitment process of some kind, and when we have people like we have on that Housing Authority Board, I feel like we're very fortunate that we've had people step up and take that responsibility to get paid absolutely nothing. So with that, I think we're through with the intros, unless somebody has some questions or other input about the way we've done things. Anybody have any input on the way we do things in the future?
I think, at this time, there's an active, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there an active investigation going on into the allegations at this time? And if so, the answer to that is yes, I think that it's pertinent for us to wait until that investigation is concluded before we make any kind of determination on what we're going to do in the future. So I guess, is there an active, is there an investigation going on at this time?
Well, the Housing Authority Board, I'm speaking based on my knowledge. The Housing Authority Board, of course, is aware of the allegations, and they will decide the extent to which they dealt with those in the past or will deal with those in the future. And I don't believe we can, we can direct them, I don't think we can or should direct them to do anything.
Well, my only concern is, if there is criminal activity involved, then I think that there ought to be an investigation by the appropriate agency if there's allegations of criminal activity.
And that to be reported back to us so we know what we're faced with.
Come back and report that there's no criminal activity?
I mean, well, there is, there is.
Or, yeah, it is, there is.
I'm not saying there is criminal activity, I'm saying if there's allegations of criminal activity, to me, that's the crux of the matter.
Well, I want to clarify again, based on, this is my understanding, and someone else may have a different understanding. We have been bombarded with documentation of things, okay? I am not an attorney, I'm not a police officer. I think there are alleged acts by an alleged perpetrator against some alleged victims that if someone thinks that they, the law has been broken with respect to that one part of these issues, then they need to talk to the police. I'm not going to call the police in, I don't have the authority or the right to do that. The second aspect of it, I'm not going, I don't want people to leave here saying that there are other allegations of criminal activity, because the stuff that I have read, not being a lawyer, not being a police officer, just being a regular citizen like everybody here, I don't see anything that I would say is criminal activity. That's all I'm saying. And so I'm going to give, the Housing Authority Board, they're going to have to respond to the same entities, the media, et cetera, et cetera, that we do. And I don't believe we have the ability to say, based on our oversight, that we want them to conduct a criminal investigation and report back to them.
Nor do we have any verification that any of that information is actually in fact
So I would be very reluctant for anybody to think that we have said, except, and I'm just taking my neck out personally, saying that one-page memo, everybody's familiar with the one-page memo and the 10-page memo, and I don't know whether you're familiar with the hundred-and-some pages that we got, okay? All of which has been very helpful, by the way. But there is a one-page memo out there, sent by a lawyer out of Greensboro.
Don't look at me.
Well, it was not Mr. Crawler or anybody he knows. Sent by a lawyer out of Greensboro that has some very serious allegations in it. I don't want anybody to think, we don't think they're very serious allegations. And if somebody, if one of the alleged victims says, "I think I need to take this to the police," that's what they need to do. The other stuff is, like you said, Mr. Mauser, they're allegations, and again, I'm not, I don't want anybody leaving here thinking, "We said there might be some illegal activity that this board should be following up on with respect to those other allegations."
I think that those other allegations and the paperwork, the 174 pages of information we received is up to the Housing Authority to take, their board to discuss.
That's kind of the way I feel, that you went on and on with accolades about the board, and I wholeheartedly agree, and the competency of that board and the competency of their attorney to handle all these allegations.
Without forgetting our oversight responsibility, and that's getting back to the future oversight a little bit. What are we going to do in the future?
And I think if that board determines there is something, they will act as they should as responsible board members, and then from that, we can determine what we feel like our future appointments or the size of that board needs to be.
I don't know, John, can you tell, what's our obligation as far as the allegations are concerned? Do we have any obligation?
I think our only obligation is for our police department to respond if there is a victim or a complaint. But I think as far as city council is concerned, I don't think you have an obligation to conduct at this point in time. I think it would be premature to.
And I would even go so far, I don't think we have the authority. I mean, if the Hickory Housing Authority is indeed a body corporate and politic, which is a legal term that says they are, they're like a corporation, we can't compel them to do anything, we can't, you know, and it's not in our best interest that we do.
And I'm not suggesting that, I just want to find out legally.
Well, and Mr. Lael brings up a good point that I made from the beginning, and that is, there are two separate entities here, city council and the housing authority. The housing authority is autonomous, they have their own board, they have their own charter, they have their own bylaws, and the city council has no input into what they do or how they conduct their business, except to the extent that you make appointments or at some time, if you wanted to discuss going a different direction with the Housing Authority in and of itself. But the way it stands now, Mr. Lael is very correct, they are a body politic in and of themselves, and no member of this board can serve on their board, and that's the way the legislature set it up, that's the way the law.
I hate when people used to say, you know, way back when we used to do it, but back when I first got on council, which was way back when, we used to rotate a council member at every housing authority meeting. Of course, not voting, just like the public, the meetings are public, and report back to the council, happenings, what went on.
But my understanding is, they couldn't attend closed meetings.
No, absolutely not.
They could not attend. And, well, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion that we have someone attend the open meetings, the open public meetings of Hickory Housing Authority, and report back to this council on the activities.
Are we rotated?
Are we rotated? I'm not, I don't know whether you get the same benefit of rotation.
That's true. Actually, you might get a better benefit, you get different perspectives. I mean, it depends on how you look at it.
As long as everything's reported back, so there's a consistency of information flow, then I think.
Let me see if I understand, is your motion to appoint a particular person, or is it to appoint somebody to rotate?
Okay, my motion is to appoint a particular person, but I would ask for a second, and then we'll have discussion, and then we can take it anywhere we want to.
That's correct.
Does that violate any kind of statute?
No.
That's Robert Cruz order.
Okay. No, I mean for us to attend meetings.
No, any, any person can attend meetings.
Then I'll second that.
A tenant's going to put.
Could we just as easily get copies of the minutes from the meetings?
Well, I think we ought to do that, too.
Let's handle his motion first.
We have a motion, a motion by Wright, second by Patton, and now let's have discussion or discussion.
I would suggest to the council that, that interested council members, as well as the interested public, can always attend the meetings. If an interested council person would attend the meeting and like to report at our regular scheduled meeting as a matter not on the agenda, I'm sure we would all receive it gratefully. But I would be, I would not want to set up the implication that Hickory, that the city of Hickory, as governed by the Hickory City Council, has any kind of oversight over the Public Housing Authority. So. So, you know, sending a member there might be helpful to understand what's going on as it relates to, you know, the volume of resident applications, you know, what the plans are as it relates to our land use planning and all that kind of thing, but it would not, in no way, shape, or form, in my mind, you know, be understood as any kind of oversight.
Brad, that's a good point, because sometimes a council person can attend a board or commission meeting, and just the fact that their presence is there has an implication of authority, and I don't want that.
I don't know that we should dictate that we're going to attend their meeting. I think what he says is fair. If we want to attend, we can attend. And I don't know that we need to mandate, or we need to dictate that we're going to attend every meeting on our rotational schedule. I would rather have it to where as, if one of us wants to go at any given time, we go, and have it like that, rather than have it mandated or dictated.
I don't think we can mandate, because of everybody's schedule, what you have.
Well, it's just like any other...
Not any other time, you can't do it, but it would be, I think, advantageous to occasionally have council members there and report back if there's, you know, just give an update.
I mean, it's no different than we do all the rest of the...
Boards and commissions, yeah.
It's different in the sense, and not just being picky, it's different in the sense, it's not our board or commission.
It's got ours, that's the difference.
And that is different.
And that's a big difference.
It's also different in the sense that, that the future of public housing in this country will impact all of us in various ways, very greatly. I'm not going to say more than our police department, or more than our fire department, or more than some of the others, but, well, I think, I think I hear, well, there's no, there's no exactly right answer to this. So if y'all don't have any objections, if you're through with the discussion, I'm going to call the question. Through with the discussion?
And your motion is...
My motion is that we appoint a person whose responsibility it is, and, well, I'd like to withdraw that motion. I withdraw, just withdraw that motion. Will you withdraw your second?
I will.
Have we violated Robert Cruz's order to...
I just think you need to call the question and vote it down, if that's what you're going to do.
Okay, let's go back. My motion does not include, my motion is this, that a designated person from Hickory City Council attend the meetings of the Hickory Housing Authority, that are open meetings, open public meetings, and somebody is assigned that specific responsibility. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I think you already had one.
Well, I changed, well, okay.
You changed the motion.
Well, I didn't, how did I change it? What did I have in my motions that I changed?
Embellished it.
Made it bigger.
Well, that's my motion, we've got a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
So we have six noes, that has defeated six to one. And if anybody says we have a rubber stamp canceled, I will defy you, okay? And I'm probably going to attend the meetings anyway.
Now, no more than three of us can attend one meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Even if we're not discussing any city business?
I would avoid doing that.
So if more than three of us show up, somebody needs to leave.
That's my, from the hip, answer, and I'll delve in that a little further. If, I mean, if you're at a party, and four of you there, and one of you have to leave, Until further notice, my recommendation would be that not more than three of you attend the meeting, and I may very well change my mind on that.
Okay. The only other thing, we presently have seven board members. Anybody have an opinion on whether we go more? I don't think we ought to go less, in my opinion, but I'm open to that discussion. Should we go more, stay the same, or should we wait until we, are we just not in a position to define a need to do that?
I think this timing is not right for that. I think we find out what's going on with this current situation before we determine if we need more or less members.
And then we look at our options, based on that quarter, our options going forward.
Is there any other business to come before this meeting? Motion to adjourn?
Subdue.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thanks for being here.